The Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, and hoffe day to our colleagues and to the community. I move to waive notwithstanding section 1.02 Sessions of Villa Hasa Turnguahan H1, Privileges of the floor, persons allowed to enter the Career Tech ACTE onto the session floor.
On that motion to waive the rule notwithstanding, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Please allow Career Tech ACTE onto the session floor. Kindly rise for the prayer. We recognize Father Gof again, our Legislative Chaplain.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Almighty and ever-living God, who is all good, gracious, abounding in kindness, full of compassion and forgiveness. As we enter another week of our Lenten journey, guide us to the path that leads to you. Fill our hearts with gratitude, patience, strength, and peace as we strive to become the best versions of ourselves, honestly admitting our shortcomings and our sins. Have invited us deeper into your world, your people, your Lent. May this time be one of outward focus, seeking you in those we often ignore. We ask this of our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever. The Lord be with you. And may Almighty God bless you, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Sadhus Massey, Father Gof again. To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the Legislature recognizes recipients of Imelazan Mastakilu Nasacrifisu on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of a recipient of Imelazan Mastakilu Nasacrifisu, Senator Luhon, you are recognized.
On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Lance Corporal Alan James Demian and the family of Lance Corporal Alan James Demian for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
Sadhus Massey, Senator Luhon. We will now have the reciting of the Inifresi, the singing of the Guam hymn in tomorrow, and the singing of the National Anthem by the Career Tech ACTE Academy. Sadhus Massey, Career Tech Academy. We'll now proceed with the roll call. Clerks, please take the roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Fisher. Senator Luhon. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Senator Parkinson. Senator Perez. Senator Canata. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Niklis. Senator Shelton. Senator Titegri. Speaker Terlahi. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Sadhus Massey, Clerks. Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated January 22, 2024, subject to corrections.
On that motion to approve the Journal, subject to corrections, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion to append communications and petitions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Sorry, Senator Shelton, Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker. There are messages from Imega Hagen Guam, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
Are there any objections to that motion to append messages from Imega Hagen Guam? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal as well.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees at this time. Madam Speaker, I move that bills introduced, Bill numbers 233-37LS and 234-37COR through 248-37COR, and resolutions introduced, Resolution numbers 303-37LS through 307-37LS and 308-37COR through 322-37COR, be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On that motion, on the first reading of bills and resolutions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now under motions. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to add Bill number 114-37LS to the Session Agenda. Bill 114-37LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations, is an act to appropriate $50,000 to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs relative to funding the April 2024 Island-Wide Veterans Convention.
On that motion to add to the Session Agenda, is there any objection? Senator Brown? There's an objection.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Is this an additional bill being added? I just want to make sure that this bill is going to meet the proper public notice requirements. If I can ask of the mover of the bill.
I am aware that the bill was uploaded in February 12, 2024, for seven days now.
Appreciate the clarification. I'd hope in the future maybe that can be elaborated on when these bills that are not on the agenda are added on the agenda for public information, and certainly the edification of the members that are here. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sadhus Massey, Senator Brown. On the motion, Senator Titegri.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, is this bill going to be going to the bottom of the file?
It will be going to second reading if the motion passes.
The placement of the bill?
Will it be placed at the bottom? Yes, sorry, bottom, yes, correct. Okay, on the motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, I also move to place the reappointment of Ray Tahaji on the Session Agenda. The reappointment of Ray C. Tahaji to serve as Member Physician Assistant Representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners for three years from April 27, 2023 to April 26, 2026. This committee report has been posted on our website since February 9, 2024. My understanding is this appointment has expired, and so it's necessary for us to move on this as quickly as possible.
On that motion, is there any objection to add the nomination of Tahaji? Senator Titegri, you are recognized.
Is this nominee on the agenda?
Not yet. The motion is to add that nomination onto the Session Agenda.
Do we have a reason as to why? Do we have a reason as to why?
Yes, if you will yield, I will explain. That's from my committee. It's been uploaded like right after the Committee on Rules meeting. It was just an error on my part. We received two nominations just, and we had a hearing very quickly because they had both expired. But we received the nominations just like a week before we had the hearing. So we had the hearing, and we tried to do the committee reports, and one of them got in, one did not. It was just an error on my part.
So the next point is that, did it meet the five-day open government law for notification?
It's been posted on the website for nine days.
But it did notification of the public on the agenda for five days.
That's correct. It wasn't part of our agenda. It's the motion to add it, notwithstanding the rules.
Okay, I'll object.
Thank you. All right, on the motion to add the nomination of Ray Tahaji onto the Session Agenda, there's been an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill number 107-37LS as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations, an act to appropriate $500,000 from the General Fund to the Guam Housing Corporation relative to funding and maintaining the Guam Housing Corporation Rural Housing Service Escrow Savings Account for affordable housing to the bottom of the agenda, since this will need the Committee of the Whole as an appropriations bill.
All right, so this is a bill already on the agenda. The motion is to place it on the bottom of the agenda, since we need Committee of the Whole. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. On motions, Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place nomination of, from the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation, for the nomination of Daphne M. Leonguero to serve as Member of the Guam Ethics Commission on the Session Agenda. This was already, when it was submitted to Committee on Rules, it's been posted since February 9.
On that motion, to place a nomination of Daphne M. Leonguero onto the agenda. Is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. For the record, this is for the Guam Ethics Commission. The motion passes. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized under motions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination from the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation, the nomination of Margaret E.R. Taquenco to serve as Member of the Guam Ethics Commission onto the Session Agenda. And this was also posted since February 9.
On that motion to place the nomination of Margaret Taquenco onto the agenda, is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. On motions, is there any other motion? Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. At this time, I move that you allow our colleagues to join me in wishing you a very happy birthday, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Happy Birthday, dear Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a, what do you call those, milestone birthday. Sadhus Massey.
All right, on motions, Senator Parkinson, you are recognized under motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance and Universal Health Insurance, the nomination of Dr. Jeffrey C. Johnson to serve as the Commissioner, Business Representative of the Public Utilities Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
All right, Dr. Johnson's nomination is already under legislative concurrent, so we will get there after motions.
Oh, apologize.
Just want to make sure. Is there any other motion before we move on to legislative concurrents? Movements?
I do have another one, Madam Speaker.
Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill number 208-37COR, sponsored by myself, an act to appropriate $15,828,000 from fiscal year 2024 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in Public Law 37-42, as amended, to the Guam Power Authority for a three-month extension to the Programa Nazuda Para Etauta Energy Credit Program relative to providing customers with $300 credit towards their account, and I would like to put this to the bottom of the Session Agenda. I know there are questions about the funds, that we may or may not have these funds, but I think we owe it to the people of Guam to have the conversation. Even if it ultimately needs to know, we need to have this conversation because the rate hike happened last month, and the last power credit expired in December.
Is the bill reported out of committee?
No, ma'am.
All right, on that motion, is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. We're still under motions. Is there any other motion? If not, we will proceed with legislative concurrents. Majority Leader, you are recognized. Sorry, Majority Leader, before we move on to legislative concurrents, can we get a motion regarding the congratulatory, commendatory resolutions?
Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted, and to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as cosponsors.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Any other motions? All right, we are now proceeding to legislative concurrents. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture the nomination of Nadine T. Sepeda to serve as a Member Marriage and Family Therapist Representative, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Nadine T. Sepeda into the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture the nomination of Ronald T. Leguanyah to serve as a Member of the Guam Incestral Lands Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place the nomination of Ronald T. Leguanyah onto the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized under legislative concurrents.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance and Universal Health Insurance, the nomination of Dr. Jeffrey C. Johnson to serve as a Commissioner, Business Representative of the Public Utilities Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place a nomination of Dr. Jeffrey Johnson onto the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized under legislative concurrents.
Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation for the nomination of Daphne M. Leonguero to serve as a Member of the Guam Ethics Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Daphne M. Leonguero to the voting file, any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation and Appropriation, the nomination of Margaret E.R. Taquenco to serve as Member of the Guam Ethics Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place a nomination of Margaret Taquenco to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still under legislative concurrents. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance and Universal Health Insurance, the nomination of Joseph M. McDonald to serve as Commissioner, Community at Large Representative of the Public Utilities Commission, with the recommendation to report out only.
On that motion to place a nomination of Joseph McDonald to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance and Universal Health Insurance, the nomination of Peter B. Montanola to serve as a Commissioner, Telecommunications Representative of the Public Utilities Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place a nomination of Peter Montanola to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, can we get a motion on Tahaji?
Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture the reappointment of Ray C. Tahaji to serve as a Member Physician Assistant Representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners.
On the motion to place that nomination of Ray Tahaji onto the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on the consent calendar. There are no items. So we will move to the second reading files. We begin the second reading file with Bill number 48-37COR. Senator Luhon, you are recognized.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Happy Birthday again, and good morning, colleagues. Madam Speaker, I moved a motion to place Bill 48-37COR in second reading. I'd like to speak on it as well. Actually, as amended by the Committee on Human Resources, I've gotten revitalization, regional affairs, public libraries, telecommunications, technology, and federal and foreign affairs, and I'd like to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill is introduced by myself, Senator Brown, Senator Perez, Senator Parkinson, Senator Barnes, Senator San Niklis, and Senator Frank Blas Jr. Fellow colleagues, today I address you today with an urgent plea to support a bill that seeks to ensure transparency and accountability within our education system. Bill 48-37COR aims to digitally inform parents and relevant parties about the current sanitary and safety conditions, as well as the instruction standards for all children's public schools. This bill represents not only a necessary step forward, but a moral imperative in guaranteeing a well-being and educational environment for our students. As it stands, without the intervention of local media, we remain oblivious to the dire and unsanitary conditions plaguing our public schools. This is simply unacceptable. Our children deserve better. They deserve transparency. They deserve safety. They deserve an education that meets the standards imposed across the country. They deserve the educational environment that fosters growth and success. The implementation of this bill is not only just The implementation of this bill is not only just a matter of convenience, it's a matter of basic human decency. In today's digital age, access to such vital information should be given, not a privilege, and yet it remains elusive for many parents and guardians. My colleagues, let us not forget that most of the data required for this initiative already exists. It merely needs to be digitized and made easily accessible online. This is not a burdensome task. It is a simple yet impactful solution that our government is more than capable of executing. By passing this legislation, we not only hold the Department of Education, GDOE, accountable, but also empower parents with the information they rightfully deserve. No longer should they be left in the dark, unaware of the conditions in which their children are learning and growing. The current state of affairs is unacceptable. It is not right that we only become aware of these inadequate conditions when the media sheds light on them, often when it's too late to enact meaningful change. We owe it to our students, our parents, and our community to do better. So let us rise, raise our expectations for a GDOE. Let us demand improvement, and let us ensure that every child in every one of our public schools has a safe access to safe, sanitary, and acceptable learning environment. Madam Speaker and colleagues, implore each of you to support Bill 48-37COR. Together, we can make a difference and uphold our duty to the children and future of Guam, and I thank you for that. And this is, again, is enacted at new, section 3134, to chapter three, division two, title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to mandating the consistent online posting of reports for every school inspection conducted on a dedicated government website, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. On the motion to place Bill 48-37 onto the agenda, Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to place it on the third reading, Sisus Massey. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Bill 48-37COR, and honestly, to us, to you, and to our colleagues, and to the listening audience from Guam and elsewhere. When our committee had heard this bill, Madam Speaker, and the recommendations were done, we truly believed that bringing greater public in their awareness of inspections conducted at the public schools would be a good thing. It's to literally post the inspection reports online, and that timeline for that was after each inspection, a timeline of 30 days of the inspection, that those inspection reports will be adhered to online. Some may have said, what would be the financial impact of this? I think the collaboration with the government agencies, working with OTEC, and working with the reports, we all know that with modern technology today, as noted by the good author, you know, we've got to keep up with, with what the changes are and how technology works, and getting things online is the more accessible way. And I think that this is good, and I support the efforts, and I ask my colleagues to please support the same. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise in support of this measure. Sinemasi.
Sinemasi, Vice Speaker. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the motion to place Bill 48-37 onto the third reading? Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the bill. I'm just drafting a, an amendment to it, because, you know, that when you walk into stores and they get inspected, you know if they're an A, B, or C. If the school's being inspected, not everybody that drives up to the school is online saying, is the school cleared or not? But I believe that if we mark, if we stamp, you know, basically put a sign saying, did you pass or you didn't? I know that probably, more than likely, in the cafeterias, they're marked, but they're inspecting the whole campus, and I believe that needs to be posted out on this, on the school, when, when parents are driving up, so that everybody knows what the status of the schools are, and so that maybe the PTOs and everybody else will participate. So I'm having it drafted at this point. But I do support the bill, but I just wanted to add that amendment to that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, Senator, is there any objection to proceeding with debate while Senators, and we'll come back to Senator Sinagastin's amendment? All right. Then is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill, on the motion to place it in third reading? Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Definitely rise in support of the bill, and just to be noted, these reports that are mentioned in the bill are actually already posted online at the Department of Health and Public Health and Social Services website, so I think it makes sense to migrate all that existing content over to the GDOE website, but also just note for the record that on the GDOE website, there is a tab there that's relative to the school inspection reports, and if you click on that tab, you will see listed several school inspection reports. But I don't know if it's just my chunky fingers, but I was trying to click on those to open them, to look over some of those reports, and the link didn't open. So definitely support the intent of this legislation. I mean, I don't know if just posting the stuff online, we've had this discussion many times here in this hall in this term, is good enough, but it definitely makes sense to have the GDOE inspection reports posted, maybe more prominently as the bill allows, that they're in there, but, I mean, you really need to put on your reading glasses and binoculars to scroll where to find it. So yeah, I would support the bill, and again, it just makes it easier if it's more prominently displayed on the GDOE website, which is what it appears this bill's trying to do, and I'd also ask, I don't know if this is the right time to be added as a cosponsor, if the good Senator Luhon would do so. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. On the motion, on the bill, Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of this bill that's been introduced by my colleague, Senator Jesse Luhon. I think we've all recognized, particularly this past term, the challenges that the Department of Education has been facing with regards to ensuring proper maintenance of its facilities, and also ensuring, more importantly, that public health is actually conducting inspections. And I have to say that because these issues have been brought to light through a lot of initiatives right here at the Guam Legislature, you know, the Public Health Department finally is going out and doing these inspections. I have to tell you that when we had a roundtable with Senator Chris Barnett, and Department of Education essentially relayed that they had not had these type of inspections, but yet these certificates were being issued by the Department of Public Health, essentially saying that these sanitation inspections had occurred, I think that was very concerning to all of us that were there. It should be concerning to all of us in the community, and certainly all the parents out there in our community that have children attending these schools. We rely on Department of Public Health and the decisions that they make in these evaluations and the inspections that they do, when they do post the status of where we're at with regards to inspection of these facilities. I mean, certainly, when you go into a restaurant, it's probably subconsciously one of the things I look at, to see what's posted. Is it an A rating? Is it a B rating? Is it a C rating? And certainly, as you go down the list, the further down the list it gets, it's probably not someplace that you want to eat. More importantly, for our students in our schools, who do eat in our school system, who do attend these schools, these classrooms, and these other facilities in the school, we want to ensure that they meet the standards. We want to ensure that our children are in a safe, clean learning environment. I mean, that's the expectation I think every parent has. That's the expectation, certainly, all of us that are in leadership, would like to see. Unfortunately, that has not been the case for quite some time, and to find out that these permits were being issued without the required inspections was concerning. What was the response from Department of Education? What was the response from Public Health? Oh, well, we provided orientation to DOE on what to do and what to expect, and what to look for, and what to address. And that, to me, just, you know, the expectation of essentially self-inspection and self-policing, I think we've seen where all of that has gone. Not a very good place, where we end up having complaints about the environment in these schools, that even though other DOE officials that should be in positions of responsibility in that school have not addressed. But then on top of that, you had Public Health saying, well, we don't have enough personnel, we don't have enough this, we don't have enough that, and therefore, they were not inspecting the schools, and they were simply issuing these sanitary permits every year. And then we ended up where we were. And I think we all agree, moving forward, that's not where we want to be. So any opportunity that we have to bring these issues to light, for any parent or any concerned member out there in the community who wants to know the status of the inspections of these schools, I think the more light we shed on the issue, the more attention we put there, it puts a little more pressure, and sometimes, yes, you need to put a little more pressure. Sometimes you need to put those in positions of responsibility, yes, you need to put their feet to the fire. Because, boy, you know, we're all tripping over each other to get these important positions. We want to be in charge, we want to be the big boss. But when it comes time to doing the work, when it comes down to being responsible, more importantly, when it comes down to the time of being accountable, well, that's a totally different story, and we sit through these roundtables, and we sit through these hearings, and our eyes roll up in our head when we hear the feedback we get from these positions, these individuals in these high positions of responsibility. I'm sure the public out there probably has a very similar sentiment and thought while they sit and listen to this. So I appreciate every effort we can, and certainly, this bill being put forth by Senator Luhon provides that opportunity, provides another layer of information, and more importantly, it provides a lot more attention to Department of Education, so that also those that are actually in a position, that have the arms and legs and the authority to actually address the maintenance of these facilities can do so, without excuses, because we get a lot of that. I don't have enough this, and I don't know how to have, whatever time in the government of Guam have we ever had enough of everything to do? If we did, goodness, we don't need all these directors, they can go home. Superintendents, they can go home. But what we do need to ensure is that there's responsibility and accountability, not just at our level, goodness, we're here for public scrutiny all the time, that's fine, that comes with a, comes with a chair, so to speak. But we also need that in the rest of government of Guam, especially in the largest agency that receives the most public funds of this government, that there is responsibility. And while we love that word accountability, we talk about it a lot, the actual reality of it in the government overall, talk to most people out there who deal with Guam. Sometimes it's hit and miss in terms of getting the service that we would like to see. So certainly, this is another ability to do that, and it puts more pressure, as it should, on the management team at DOE, to make sure that these schools are safe and they're clean for our children, not just to attend, but our children to eat and be educated in. And I think that's something, at the end of the day, we all want to see, so I certainly rise in support of this bill, and thank my colleague, Senator Luhon, for bringing this issue forth. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On the motion to place the bill on third reading, is there any senator who'd like to be recognized? Senator Sinicless, you are recognized.
Hi, good morning, Madam Speaker. Good morning, everybody. Morning, viewing audience. I support the, uh, the bill. It's a wonderful bill, shows, allows for transparency, and it's great. And I applaud the author and ask for the support for everybody, and let's get this bill, uh, come law.
Thank you, Senator Sinicless. On the motion to place the bill on the third reading, Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I certainly rise in full support of Bill 48-37. So many great things were said, I just wanted to kind of add that, you know, when you look at the number of the bill, obviously, it was introduced very early in the term, in a term now that has been spoken about by retiring speakers, that we, really with the leadership of the Chairman of Education and everyone else who's come together to try to put more emphasis and concentrate on our educational system, and trying to ensure that we do right by our children, and have them have an environment that is safe, clean, and conducive to learning. You know, other senators in the past, you know, have introduced legislation outlining the basic requirements under the Every Child Act, and really, when you look at that, that legislation is the framework, and what coincides with that, of course, is safety, and, you know, a healthy environment, and inspection that, that describes that this institution meets all those requirements. As the Chairman of Education said, that, you know, there is these reports on the website of Public Health, but I have to say, you know, Madam Speaker, even, I can, I call myself computer a little bit, even as much as I don't really know how to navigate so well, as, of course, younger people, I find now, when I'm out and about talking to folks of our generation, saying, hey, I've been going on the website to look for this, look for that, so this convenience really has become something, particularly when there's issues of high concern, has really becomes a tool that just about everybody uses now. Just going into it a little bit more, I like watching some of the younger people in my family, and of course, those who are even more senior than myself, when they call them over, you know, boy, come here and pull up, find this website for me, and so what I'm trying to say is, is that it's not, it's not as far-fetched, and it's really kind of the new way, other than reading a newspaper, some of our newspapers are online now, but to retrieve information, it really has transcended and become really the go-to. So these reports are very important and a way for individuals who are concerned about their children's education, and want to go and find out what the current status of their school is, and the fitness of that school to provide an adequate education is. And so I think more and more and more information in this age, where it really is something that is now really, no matter what generation you come from, whether you access it through using your family members who are more than like me a little bit, and, you know, to be able to get that information, and read, and learn, and keep posted on what the progress is. So once again, I wanted to thank my colleague for thinking that early on in the term, and one of the first bills he introduced, and I'm kindly requesting to be a cosponsor as well. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this bill.
Sisus Massey, Senator Duñez. On the motion to place the bill on third reading, any other senator like to be recognized, or Senator Sinagastin, oh, any other senator? If not, then we'll take a one-minute recess to get copies of the amendment by Senator Sinagastin passed out. One-minute recess. One-minute recess. We're back from recess. Copies of the amendment have been passed out. Senator Sinagliss, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The amendment is just to add a new C... A new C to Section 2 of the bill to read physical posting. The department shall post in a conspicuous place visible to the public near the main entrance to the, to the main office of the school, the official status of the school's inspection grade. It indicates status of the school to include if the school failed inspection or any part is condemned. There's many occasion, family members be walking the building, they don't even know that this area is condemned, and it should be so posted. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, anyone would like to be recognized? Senator Sinagliss, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support Senator Joe. Can I be a co-sponsor? Okay, thank you. I support the amendment, ma'am, and I support the bill as well. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Sinagliss. On the amendment, Senator Barnett, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support the amendment. I think it'd be convenient to post in the front office as the amendment calls for, not just the inspection grade, but also if the school has failed inspection or if any part is condemned. And I support this because if you walk around in the schools, as I've done many times, a lot of times, areas in our schools unfortunately look like crime scenes because areas of our schools that are condemned are cordoned off with a yellow caution tape. I've seen doors boarded up. I've seen all kinds of things in these condemned areas. But the author of the amendment is right, if you don't know these areas are condemned, I mean, you could walk right into one of them. So I definitely support having all that information upfront, as this is all too, unfortunately, common scene in so many of our public schools where student populations aren't able to use the entire building because of structural damages that, you know, render wings, classrooms, totally unusable for our public school students. But that's the only way many of these schools have been able to pass inspection is by condemning huge areas of the school. And then when they do that, there's an understanding with public health that they're not going to inspect that part of the school. So I support the amendment. It goes a long way towards providing more transparency to many parents. Sometimes, you know, parents don't get to walk around in the school. A lot of times, the office is as far as they'll go. And so I support the amendment, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. On the amendment, Senator Lujan, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of the amendment as well. It's great to be able to, again, transparency and as the former speaker, Senator Barnett, has said, yeah, sometimes you go to some areas in some of the schools that, yeah, it's like a disaster and how the heck are we still in, you know, in a passing grade pretty much. But yeah, a grading system visible to the public makes a whole lot of sense and it's just common sense. So I stand in full support of the amendment, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Lujan. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? If not, then the sponsor may close. He's waving closure. So on the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, amendment passes. We're back on the bill. I believe everyone has spoken on the bill who wanted to speak. Sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Colleagues, thank you very much for your support and positive input on the, of course, uh, with the recommendations, of course, from the, uh, public hearing, uh, to enhance the, uh, the, um, of course, the, the, the bill. And likewise, the amendment today that made it even better. So, I want to thank, you know, I gotta tell a funny story. I mean, in regards to transparency and the age of, uh, of, um, technology, this weekend I ran to a relative and said, "Hey, boy, I see you on Facebook, Instagram, and walkie-talkie." I go, "Whoa, whoa, walkie-talkie?" I said, "Oh, wow, must be a new..." And, and hopefully that relative of mine, that's the new app that maybe they're putting out there. So, maybe one day this relative of mine will become, uh, a billionaire with that new app of walkie-talkie. So, anyway, with that being said, uh, Madam Speaker, uh, thank you very much, colleagues, for your support in this bill. Thank you very... Uh, I, I want to move, uh, again, motion to, oh, hold it, hold it? Yep, yep. Motion to add, um, Senators Joseph Augustine, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Talat Taitegui, and all of the senators that, uh, like to come on as sponsors for this bill.
There's a motion to add sponsors, uh, Senators Sinagastin, Barnett, Duñez, Taitegui, and all others. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Motion placed, um, bill...
There's a motion, uh, so on the motion to place a bill on the third reading...
Third reading.
Is there any, as amended, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Situs Massey, Senator. We're on Bill Number Eighty-One dash Thirty-Six, LS. Senator Siniklis, you are recognized.
Uh, good morning again, Madam Speaker, and good morning, everybody, again. I'd like to, uh, um, introduce this, uh, bill to the... To the third reading for discussion.
All right.
Um, this is Bill Number...
Please proceed, yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. This is Bill Number Eighty-One dash Thirty-Six, introduced by myself, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Talat T. Taitegui, Thomas J. Fisher, Jesse A. Luhon, William A. Parkinson, Roy A. B. Canata, Joanne Brown, Chris Barnett, Christopher M. Duñez, and Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and act to, and act to amend subsection four zero one 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 of Article One, uh, Chapter Forty, Title Five, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the mayor's council of Guam to select the time and date of their oath-taking ceremony. Yes, so, uh, I'll go ahead and speak on the bill.
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, I, uh, I've, I've experienced this, uh, when we got inaugurated, you know, how everybody was running around trying to get to everybody's, uh, uh, the different types of, uh, oath-taking. And so, I can understand and appreciate how, um, busy we all get, that, that one day when we all take that, that oath of office. So, um, the mayors have brought this to my attention and they were asking if they, if we could, uh, allow them to, um, select the time and the date for their inauguration. And, uh, some of the concerns were that they wanted, uh, you know, family members to be able to attend, you know? So, they wanted to make sure that the time and the availability was, was, uh, you know, was, uh, made, made so that they, their family members can, uh, attend. And then also, we, uh, had, uh, you know, we had them come and, uh, be with us during our oath taken and then we have to run off and see the governor take her oath-taking. And, and so it can be a very, uh, uh, a very, very busy day on that, uh, that, that week. So, um, the mayors have asked me, and so this bill comes, comes to us, uh, because of that. And, um, it's, it's simple, straightforward measure, um, and I ask, uh, my colleagues to, uh, you know, support, support the, uh, support the measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On that motion to place Bill Eighty-One dash Thirty-Six to the third reading, is there any senator who'd like to be recognized? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Wow, that was so fun. It's, uh, didn't get any objections. Um, okay, can I add, uh, co-sponsors? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. We have somebody who wants to speak on the...
Senator Perez, would you like to be recognized on the bill?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a question for Legal. Um, so I just want clarity on whether the, you know, the oath, um, if there's gonna be an overlap of the outgoing mayor and the incoming mayor, uh, depending on the, when the oath's taken? Or if it's, um, if A supersedes everything else? So, if I can have a moment's recess to ask Legal regarding that? And if there's a, uh, an amendment that's needed to clarify that, to, to ensure that there's no overlap?
All right. Uh, we'll take a one-minute recess. Please address all your questions to Legal while we are on recess.
We're back from recess. A floor amendment has been passed out. We were on Senator Perez when we left off. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that time to confer with legal. And I'm glad to collaborate with the sponsor of the bill on this. Sidoz Massey.
Sidoz Massey, Senator Perez. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Bill 81. On the bill? If not, then the sponsor. You may close on the bill. Senator Siniklas, you are recognized.
Ma'am, I have an amendment to the bill. I'd like to speak on it.
Please proceed.
First of all, I'd like to thank yourself, Madam Speaker, and Senator Sabino with a good eye, and Senator San Agustin and legal counsel for actually catching and helping me make a better product. I wanted to amend lines 13 through 26 on page two to amend section two of the bill.
Please explain the amendment.
We're going to strike out. The term of office of mayor, vice mayor shall commence in a strikeout at 12 to 8. And on the first Monday of the month following their election upon the taking of oath of office and shall expire on the first Monday in January following the next regular general election, mayors and vice mayors. And this amendment was proffered so that we don't run into any hurdles with the current law and the Organic Act. And thank you again to all those who helped me make this possible. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is it -- would anyone like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator San Agustin, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to rise in support of the amendment because as we were looking at the bill, it was isolating to a specific time. And you can't do that. When you start doing that, then it has to happen at that time. Being that they took that out, it took care of whatever they needed to take care of. And I fully support this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment. Anyone on the amendment? If not, sponsor may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, again. I'd like to thank you and legal counsel and Senator Sabino and Senator Joe San Agustin for allowing to help me make this amendment go forward and hopefully the bill as well. So thank you very much again. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. And on the bill? Oh, sorry. On the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, amendment passes. Senator Siniklas, you may continue to close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, again. And so, like again, this is something that the mayors asked of me. And that's why we proffered this measure. It's a good thing so that way they can, you know, they can make the necessary changes and allow for more of their families and to attend their all-taking ceremony and allow all of us to, you know, also be there for them as well as they would also like to attend our inaugurations. So it's a wonderful bill. It's a great bill. It's something that the mayors have had concerns and they just really want to try to make sure that this, you know, that during all-taking that we don't all run together with our times. But this is a great bill and I ask my colleagues for their support. And thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place -- go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. Move to the voting file. Thank you.
All right. On the motion to place a bill on third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion passes. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to recess until 2:00 p.m.
All right. There's a motion to recess. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we will recess until 2:00 p.m. Sidoz Massey.